Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hillsborough Public Library. We have a full house tonight and we have a welcome also to our live stream audience. I'm Stephen Greenwood. I am a professor at Portland State University and I will serve as the moderator for this year's City of Hillsborough Candidates Forum. I'd like to thank the Hillsborough Public Library for hosting this important community event and also, of course, to the candidates. Our outline for this evening will be as follows. First, each candidate will be given two minutes to introduce themselves and give an opening statement. And then there will be three questions that follow. And in turn, for question one and question two, again, each candidate will be given two minutes to answer that question. On the third question, they will be given three minutes to answer. And then finally, each of them will be given two minutes to give a closing statement. We do have a timekeeper who will keep everyone on time, I'm sure, and I'm going to thank all of the candidates in advance for keeping within the time constraints tonight. It will make it easier for everybody here. We have six candidates up here running for three open seats on the city council. Welcome to you all, candidates, and we're now going to have them introduce themselves and we'll start with candidate Saba Anvery.
Hi, so is this the opening statement or just?
Yes, the opening statement.
All right. Good. All right. Hello and good evening. My name is Saba Anvery and I'm honored to be here today as a candidate for Hillsborough City Council Ward One. Thank you to the Hillsborough City Library for hosting this and to Linda and Stephen for moderating. So as a 24-year Hillsborough resident, a mom, volunteer, and engineering manager, I am passionate about our city's future. I grew up in the UAE and in Pakistan where opportunities for community engagement and participation in government are not available. I'm running because I believe that it is necessary to participate in government and this is another way for me to give back to the city that has given me and my family safety, community, and opportunity. I am an electrical engineer. I have a master's in electrical engineering from Purdue and an MBA from Portland State. I have been an engineering manager since 2015 and have managed through organizational change, managing large and small teams and budgets. My husband and I have been married for 24 years and I have two teenage children. As a mom, long-term volunteer, and engineering manager, I excel at collaborative problem-solving and listening. My commitment is to transparency, integrity, and inclusive engagement. My top three priorities include affordable housing for all, ensuring services keep pace with city growth, thoughtful economic growth that harnesses Hillsborough's immense potential, and climate-resilient infrastructure. I am excited to share my vision and listen to your concerns and thank you for your -- thank you for considering me for your candidacy, for my -- thank you for considering my candidacy for Hillsborough City Council Ward One. Thanks.
Thank you. Elizabeth Case.
Thanks, Stephen. Good evening. Thank you guys for coming out tonight. Thank you, Stephen, for moderating this. I moved to Hillsborough almost a decade ago and my husband and I were house hunting. We came into Hillsborough and specifically into Orenco Station and knew this is where we need to move, this is where we need to live, and we bought the one house that was available that fit our criteria. Check, done, it made it easy. We found out really quickly how wonderful and special Hillsborough is, the walkability, to be able to walk with our dog, to coffee and restaurants, and the green spaces have been incredible. We know we live in a special place. That's why we're all here tonight. I got involved after the 2016 election. I knew I needed to do more and I participated in the 2017 Civic Leadership Academy through the city of Hillsborough, which led me to a relationship with the Chamber of Commerce to work on some support for entrepreneurship in the community. I also actually ended up joining the library board and I was the board chair in 2020, a very chill year to be a board chair anywhere. I also joined the Washington County Chamber of Commerce Board along the way. And then in 2022, the mayor asked me to step up my service and run the city's public safety levy renewal in 2022. I currently serve on the Environmental Stewardship Committee here in Hillsborough as well, and I joined that last year. I love this town. I've never loved where I live as much as I love living in Hillsborough, and that's why I'm running for city council. My top priorities are housing. We need more of it. We need more of it at all levels, up and down, and we need to make it easier to get into it and to build it and to access it. Workforce development, making sure that we have good jobs, that we're training a good workforce out there to support the companies that are coming to town, and environmental sustainability, which I'll talk a little bit more later. I think our city council has done some really great work. We're stronger than we were four years ago. I plan to continue to advance this work and make sure we continue to grow in the right direction for generations to come.
Thank you. Mike McTernan.
Great, thanks. First, thanks for coming to listen to us. I'm really excited to see all these people here. My name is Mike McTernan. I'm running for city council in Ward B. I can't say I've ever saw myself running for office, but here I am, so why the change apart? A few years ago, I read that the Hillsborough Airport was the leading lead polluter in the state. Since then, I've watched the port of Portland talk about doing something about this but not taking any concrete steps towards limiting or let alone banning the use of leaded fuel at its airport. I read about how Intel years ago emitted a dangerous amount of fluorine gas into our city and how they recently have been permitted to increase emissions at all their plants. I've also watched over the past year as the city annex people's land to expand industrial zones on the outskirts, turning it into a place of data centers, chip factories, parking lots, and warehouses for Amazon deliveries. I've lived through wildfires, droughts, and I watch as each year is hotter than the last. I read these things and I see these things and I live these things and I know there's a better path, one that doesn't compromise the health and safety of our city's people and our environment for additional tax revenue, that doesn't allow industry to skirt the rules and pass on the cost of their business to the people that live here. I wonder if we aren't squandering our opportunities to build something more sustainable, something that won't poison our air, our water, and harm our health, something that can truly make our city a better place to live and not just a place to make a living. So here I am. I'm offering an alternative to the idea that growth can continue unabated without consequence, an idea I think the recent history has shown is misguided and dangerous. We're starting to run into hard boundaries on what we as people can take and more direly what the planet can take. We have to draw the line and say no more. We have to stand up for the belief that the environment is more than a shopping cart we can take and take from, and stand up for the belief that we are not just cogs in an economic machine. So that is why I'm running, to stand up. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Mead.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for being here. And for those online, thank you for taking the two hours to watch this and participate. You are helping shape and craft the future of Hillsborough, so I want to say thank you. To the library staff that is here that put this together, for moderating, and Stephen, thank you so much. My name is Jacob Marshall Mead, but my friends, family, and neighbors call me Jake. I'm the fourth generation from my family to be called Hillsborough Home, and it is an -- I've seen the incredible things our city has accomplished. With the completion of South Hillsborough, Oregon's largest planned community in history, we will see growth of almost over 20,000 residents. The city council was just presented a housing needs analysis to build an extra 14,000 homes in the next 20 years. I'm running for Hillsborough City Council because we need bold, common-sense solutions to manage that growth. We need experienced leadership to shape the future of Hillsborough so the next four generations have a thriving city to live in, work in, and call home. My platform is on -- we need to address affordable and equitable housing. We need to truly address our comprehensive healthcare access and we need to scale our city services to match our growth. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Next is Mark Grambo.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you, Stephen, for moderating. I want to thank you all for attending and thank my fellow candidates for stepping up to serve. I'm Mark Grambo and I'm a small business owner and community organizer and civic leader, and I'm asking for your vote for Hillsborough City Council in Ward Three. I'm a recent graduate of the Hillsborough Civic Leadership Academy and I'm a member of the City of Hillsborough 2035 Community Engagement Committee. I take pride in my work as an advocate and volunteer for local organizations, serving our unhoused neighbors, migrant workers, and LGBTQ+ communities. As your city councillor, I will advocate for equitable policies empowering community members, particularly those who have been historically marginalized, and strengthen partnerships and collaborations with other governing bodies. I will hold regular town halls to ensure our city government is accountable to the people. I am passionate about dismantling barriers that limit community engagement, electoral participation, career opportunities, homeownership, healthcare, and education. My other priorities include promoting affordable housing through mixed-use zoning, higher-density buildings, and reducing development barriers, advocating for access to housing, mental health services, and resources for those experiencing houselessness, expanding the city climate action plan to address that the climate crisis is now and disproportionately affects low-income residents, particularly communities of color, as well as cutting red tape for small businesses, supporting affordable childcare and after-school programs, promoting workforce training, and providing support to small business and particularly BIPOC-owned businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Rob Harris.
Thank you, Stephen. I'd like to thank the Hillsborough Public Library and thank my fellow candidates for offering to serve our city. My name is Rob Harris and I've lived here for 37 years with my family and I'm a small business owner. And I'm running for city council because our community faces critical, maybe generational issues like housing affordability, homelessness, climate change, and rapid economic growth. I believe I have experienced the knowledge and the skills to lead our city over the next four years. The lack of affordable and available housing is a pressing concern. While housing is a regional and national issue, there are a few things that local government can do. We can review zoning and building codes to assure they're not hindering new housing. We can consider vertical density, mixed-use neighborhoods, and infill to create more housing while protecting the character of our neighborhoods. Our city government can help build more subsidized housing, but we also have to rely on the private sector to build the majority of our homes. So I will work with builders, nonprofits, as well as smart growth groups to find widely acceptable solutions that increase our housing options for everybody. Homelessness continues to be a challenging issue. More deeply affordable and subsidized housing, shelters, and services for those that have been difficult to house will continue to be my priority. Moving people into permanent homes and enforcing laws to preserve and protect our neighborhoods will be a necessity, but I will always lead with humanity and grace as we navigate those difficult issues. Hillsborough's land, talented resources, make us an attractive place for businesses to grow and for new businesses to start. Economic growth brings not only opportunities but risks, so let's look for the best opportunities while managing those risks. We need to support business diversity and small business growth. We need good-paying jobs for everyone from entry level to executive, and we must always consider climate change and community and economic resiliency when planning our growth. The decisions we make over the next four years will have profound impacts on generations to come in our community, and I take that responsibility seriously. My guiding principles in all decisions will be what's good for everyone who calls or will call Hillsborough Home and how can we make this a more thriving community for all.
Thank you all for those opening statements, and let's now get to the first question. First question is, if elected, please share one specific thing that you will do to address your top priority in the position. And again, we will start with Saba Anvery.
Thank you, Stephen. So I'm canvassing every weekend and I found that to be the best way to find out what people are concerned about. And one of the things that have been brought -- one of the things that's been brought up often is the increase in the homeless population. So that is my top priority. Homelessness has many causes. There's lack of affordable housing, there's unemployment, domestic violence, mental illness, and substance abuse. I believe housing is a basic human right. I believe that folk need a helping hand at times and that we need to lead with empathy and compassion. At the same time, we cannot tolerate vandalism or unsafe public spaces. So to address homelessness, I'll gather data to understand our specific challenges, Hillsborough's specific challenges, increase affordable housing options through inclusive zoning partnerships and reducing permitting requirements, provide rent utility assistance and connect residents with social services, and then expand mental health, domestic violence response teams, and police resources. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Elizabeth Case, and if any of you want me to repeat the question, please ask.
I'm okay, thank you. One of my top priorities is environmental sustainability, and so my top thing that I will do to address that as my top priority is to approve the climate action plan when it comes up for a vote next summer at city council. It is currently in process and being developed, and I'm really excited to get to work on it. It's been a -- the Comprehensive Climate Action Plan has been a council priority and I'm looking forward to approving that plan. As I've spent time on the Environmental Stewardship Committee, I've seen how we are measuring and have some thoughtful plans and concrete goals that we can measure along the way to see how we're progressing or need to pivot if we need to, and so I'm excited to get to work on that climate action plan.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike McTernan.
Thanks. My priority is the same, actually. I'd love to develop and solidify a common action plan for the city. The city's work to develop the Environmental Stewardship Plan for 2035 is a good start, I think, but it's kind of vague in how it plans to reach its goal and has no mechanism for holding those in charge accountable for adhering to the document's guidelines, something I think is imperative for a plan that could span decades and be subject to the whims and prejudices of individuals as the government cycles through positions. A formal plan with firm time commitments, detailed ideas on how to reach the goals outlined, and accountability is needed, something that goes beyond, it would be great if we had this and this, but we can start it after we approve this giant factory on the edge of town, or we'll do this good thing here, but then we have to allow this bad thing there. Without a formal plan, these compromises will continue as those in office won't have to answer to future generations who may ask why they weren't considered or why didn't we do something when we had a chance. A climate plan ratified by the people, it doesn't allow for those in charge to backside on their promises is essential to providing for the next generation. I don't see this as a bad thing either. I see it as an opportunity, a chance to be a model for other cities around the country, be a leader in creating a community of the future, more sustainable and climate-friendly, more just and equitable, and one that doesn't compromise their values for an easy dollar. We only have to look to a few years ago when our entire city was engulfed in smoke, the air poisonous, the sky orange, to realize how little room we have to continue to put off planning for a certain future. We need to be smarter about how we prioritize how our city grows, need to consider the ramifications of our decisions, not just over this year or next, for the next 20, or 30, or 50 years. A solid and formal climate plan is a necessary guidepost to a better future for our city, and I intend to make sure we have one.
Thank you. Now Jake Mead.
Once elected, my top priority will be addressing the housing crisis that's affecting so many in our community. Right now, the median home price is just shy of $550,000, which is simply unattainable for the majority of our residents. That's why over 50% of our community are renters, struggling with rising costs that make it harder and harder to stay in the community they love. I've experienced this firsthand. I can't afford to buy a home in this market and I'm paying about $800 more a month in rent than I would for a mortgage for a similar-sized house. One specific action I'll take is advocating for policies that encourage high-density, mixed-use, and multifamily developments. This would significantly increase the supply of housing options. I'll also focus on streamlining permitting processes and revisiting the development fee structures to reduce the barriers of cost and time needed to build homes. I'll push for incentives to ensure that developers prioritize affordable housing in every project that they build in our city. Housing isn't just about shelter, it's about providing stability and fostering community. Homeownership is the cornerstone of the American dream, the gateway into the middle class, and how families can build generational wealth. I am committed to ensuring that people of all income levels have a chance at becoming homeowners, and I will work tirelessly to make that a reality for our community.
Thank you, Jay. Mark Grambo.
Thank you. Speaking of housing, it's a good segue. If you take a look at my website, you'll see that my policies and principles and values are pretty well laid out, so I'm just going to pick one to focus on tonight, and that you can go to my website, gramboforhillsborough.com, but I will talk about that I want to spearhead a Renters' Bill of Rights. I'm sure every candidate can agree that we need to save on affordable housing, but we must not forget that half of our neighbors are renters. And what that looks like is requiring six months' notice before all rent increases, mandating relocation assistance when rent increases more than 5%, late rent eviction protections for children and education workers during the school year, capping fees such as pet rent, late fees, laundry fees, and other excessive charges and deposits, late rent eviction protections for renters during extreme weather events, requiring that code violations be resolved before rent can be increased, establishing a right to counsel in eviction court, regulating the rent such that a full-time minimum wage worker can afford a one-bedroom apartment with no more than 30% of their income. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rob Harris, to you.
Thank you. My highest priority is going to be helping to address the homeless situation in this city. I've knocked on a lot of doors over the last several months and I quite often ask people, what is your biggest concern? What would you like the city to pay attention to? Quite often, homelessness is the thing that comes to the top and usually it's in a very sympathetic way. People have empathy, they see folks on the street, they don't want them living on the street, they would like them to have places to live, and I think that's the general feeling within this city, and it's something I feel very strongly about because as a public justice lawyer for 35 years, I've worked with people who've cycled in and out of this system largely because of their instability, because of homelessness, because of powerful street drugs, because of lack of mental health, and because of lack of healthcare. And these are things that are intersectional. And on top of that, we've had COVID and we've had the growing unaffordability of basic housing. You know, you can't rent a single room anymore in most places in Hillsborough. Even duplexes and multiplexes are becoming very expensive, as has been pointed out by my colleagues here. And so for me, addressing that problem is going to address several core issues that affect our community in very negative ways. And if we can address these things and move folks who are maybe treatment-resistant, maybe the most difficult to house, if we can move them to treatment, stability, we will see success. I was one of the co-founders of Veterans Treatment Court in this county, and that meant that people who served our country and were honorably discharged but got involved with the criminal justice system largely because they suffered from PTSD or TBI would come in the system and we would get them treatment and hook them up with housing treatment. It works and we can do this.
Okay, thank you. And thank you to all of the candidates for staying within the time limitations. You've done a great job of that. And let's go now to the second question, and I have to tell you that this is a question I'm particularly personally looking forward to hearing the answers. Second question is, please describe an experience, an expertise, or a passion that distinguishes you from the other candidates. And again, we will start with Saba Anvery.
Thank you, Stephen. So I thought about what to share for this question. I was thinking a bit about it, you know, thinking about different experiences I've gone through, growing up with unruly hair in a culture where women are not supposed to stand out, volunteering with the International Union for Conservation of Nature up in the Himalayas, becoming a yoga teacher, being a woman in a decidedly male-dominated field. But in the end, I decided I want to share something very basic. It's cherishing democracy and the freedoms it gives us and realizing the responsibility that comes with it. And to understand why I'm sharing this is, I grew up in two countries. I grew up in Pakistan and I grew up in the UAE. One was a brutal military dictatorship and the other was a pretty brutal monarchy. I was taught a lot of propaganda in school, right, which is common in dictatorships, and I believed it fully till my mid-teens. And around that time, I started to read history books that were written by authors outside those countries, and my journey of de-education began. I moved to the US in 98 for school and to Hillsborough in 2000, and I kept reading and thinking and learning, and I first discovered the power of community involvement when I realized, actually, it was in a library, I realized how complex institutions depend on volunteering in such societies. And so I jumped into that, did a lot of volunteering with my skill sets, and then I remember when I could vote and I got my first ballot, I got goosebumps because nobody had ever asked me before how I wanted to be governed. So my evolution of thought continued and I realized that participation in government is actually critical for a thriving, just, and equitable community. So I don't take democracy for granted, I understand responsibly that comes with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Case.
All right. So what distinguishes me from the other candidates is that I have already been serving and leading this community at the city level. I participated in the city civic leadership academy in 2017. We focused on supporting entrepreneurship in Hillsborough, which led me to the Washington County Chamber of Commerce where we ended up starting a coworking space in the glorious time of spring of 2019 where an open concept floor plan was such a brilliant idea and what could ever go wrong. And joining the library board, as I mentioned earlier, I joined the library board in 2018 and I served as the board chair during the pandemic. I am officially, I think, the only board chair who has never led a meeting in person and that my first act was to shut the library down so we could keep residents safe and then not be open for a few months. So that was a really fun time. The mayor reached out to me in 2022 and asked me to lead the city's public safety levy. We're really lucky, we live in a city that is a full-service city and that values our public safety, so the levy supports police, fire, and some parks maintenance. There are a lot of cities around the state that cannot pass their public safety levies and ours passed with 83% of the vote. And then, as I mentioned, last year I joined the city's Environmental Stewardship Committee. We have a lot of great awards and accolades around our environmental stewardship and our green energy and our -- and the work that we have done, and so I joined the Environmental Stewardship Committee to learn more about that. I knew that was a bit of a knowledge gap for me, and that's why I joined that. It's part of the Hillsborough's 2035 Plan, and I'm excited to be doing that so that we can continue to see that Hillsborough can be enjoyed for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Mike McTernan.
Yeah, sure. So based on my other answers, I bet you can guess maybe where this is headed. I know it's hard to imagine, you see me up here saying we need to slow down growth and accept less revenue and plan not just for tomorrow but decades down the road. You're probably thinking, you know, what's this guy's deal? Where's all this coming from? My path to where I am today has always been defined by my connection to the natural world. When I worked as a chef through my 20s and early 30s, I built relationships with local farmers to supply ingredients for my restaurants. I learned how people choose -- how people chose to grow their food mattered, not just for the taste but for the health of the land and the community that they relied on to live, how they saw it not just as a place to use and exploit but to protect and cherish, ensuring it would remain healthy and productive for generations to come. As I transitioned away from restaurants, I took a job as a school garden coordinator at a nonprofit that focused on providing local produce that was donated by farmers to those experiencing food insecurity. I saw a small group of people with the core value that true community comes together to make better lives better for those around them, could create lasting and positive change. I worked with city officials, teachers, farmers, and children to build dozens of gardens around our city. I watched how kids would light up as they tried fresh herbs for the first time or harvested a fruit from a plant they grew from a seed or told me about the meal they helped make at home. Now as an ecologist, I get to study all the ways that the world is connected, how no animal or plant or person is isolated from the world or others around them, and it's inspiring. In the same way, a diverse ecosystem is healthy and resilient, I've learned that local farmers can create sustainable and resilient food systems for a city, that community members can create sustainable and resilient social safety nets for those who need help, and that small groups of dedicated individuals can create lasting and sustainable food systems for our city. that small groups of dedicated individuals can create lasting and sustainable positive change all around the world. Now I'm hoping to prove that elected officials with the help from the citizens of their city can build a sustainable and resilient community that values diversity, environmental health, and equity, not through compromising these values but by embracing them.
Okay, thank you. Jake Mead.
The one thing that really distinguishes me from the other candidates running an award too is my diverse range of experiences, combining corporate leadership, small business ownership, and deep community involvement. I have led executive-level roles, managed a $2.5 billion portfolio as an analyst, and I now run a successful small business right here in South Hillsborough, employing three people full-time. I understand the challenges of working within both large organizations and running a local business, which gives me a well-rounded perspective on economic and community development. But beyond the professional role, my passion lies in community engagement. I volunteer extensively. I chair the Washington County Chamber Small Business Entrepreneur Council. I founded and chair the LGBTQ+ Business Advisory Council, and I serve as president for the Future Farmers of America Hillsborough Supporters and Alumni. I've also worked on boards like the Hillsborough Schools Foundation, where I serve as the treasurer, Business Against Human Trafficking, the Tuesday Night Market, and most recently, the Washington County Chamber of Commerce. These roles have allowed me to hear directly from community members, and I've seen how policy decisions impact people's everyday lives. What sets me apart is this blend of high-level experience and grassroots community work. I know how to navigate complex issues and get results, but I'm equally passionate about being a hands-on advocate for our community and our businesses. I'm ready to bring this unique combination of expertise and energy to city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Rambo.
I'm going to go off script a little bit here. I want to start a little bit talking about some of the things that I've noticed that I have in common with some of our other candidates here. I noticed that Sava talked about being a yoga teacher, and I'm a meditation teacher, at least I was. So there's a commonality there. And I know that Sava's from Afghanistan. I'm from the US, but I lived in India, so I relate a lot to the types of issues you see in some of these lesser companies that are countries that are less wealthy, let's say. And then with Elizabeth, I'm also a graduate of the Hillsborough Civic Leadership Academy, so we have that in common. And then Mike, I'm just hearing from today. I like to hear what you're saying about sustainability and keeping things local and stuff is very meaningful for me. And with Jake, I'm a small business owner like Jake. Jake is a friend, and we're both renters, as it turns out, too. And of course, Rob and I share a lot of similar policies and some similar values. So with what time I have left, I'm going to try to read what I actually wrote. "I believe I have a unique set of life experiences that have informed my values and priorities in such a way as to favor the communities most lacking and in need of the support of our local government. Whether it is my experience living in majority non-white communities, my work abroad with impoverished communities in India and Nepal, or my experience as a member of the LGBTQ+ community, I bring strong core values that prioritize reducing suffering over personal gains and interests. My passion for public service has manifested itself in my volunteer and advocacy work, and now with my desire to take it to the next level as an elected official. I don't believe that establishment representation is something that we're lacking now in city government. Electing me ensures that the seat I'm running for is held by a working-class person to represent the interests of working-class residents." Thank you.
Okay. And Rob Harris.
Thanks, Steve. I want to acknowledge, much as Mark did, the work that a lot of people up here have been doing in this community, whether it's grassroots or leadership or involvement in civic activities, library board, I've done the library board as well. I volunteered a lot as well over the last 30-some years. But I think the one thing, and it's probably my age, honestly, but I've been involved in leadership at some levels where we were seeking and accomplishing systemic change and bringing in very diverse groups of stakeholders together that didn't often agree on things to agree to common goals and work together to achieve those goals. Specifically, I would mention my work in the criminal justice system, because that's a lot of what my professional career has been doing. Quite often, as we were trying to get changes in our court system, whether it's early case resolution, the Veterans Court I talked to you about, the Rapid Mental Health Treatment Court, where we would try and get counselors into jail, where people were being held temporarily and maybe going through psychotic episodes to try and get them stabilized. I was quite often the only defense attorney in the room with a couple of DAs and a couple of judges. And you can imagine the three lawyers, each with their own little siloed areas here, trying to get things done. And the first thing I would say is, what do we want to achieve? What's our common goal? What can we agree on? And once we agreed on things, oh, we want to get people treatment and go through the decompensation and get them ready to go, and so we can then get them to the right facility or process them through the system, should that be the way to go, then we could start talking about what tools were available to us and how we could reach these and how to implement and process these. This is the way you get systemic change. And if you can get 60% of the people to agree, that's going to be a permanent systemic change. If you only get 50 plus 1%, that could be reversed. So building the coalition, getting things done, getting people to agree is how we can get systemic change in this community.
Okay, thank you. We're going to now move to the third question, and on this question, you're going to make two things that are different. One is that the candidates will all have three minutes to answer this question. And this time, we will start, actually, with Rob Harris and move in the other direction, which means that Sava Anwar will be batting cleanup on this last question. And here's the question. "If elected, you will serve in an important and influential role that will shape the future of the Hillsborough community. As a policymaker representing our growing diverse community, how will you advance diversity, equity, and inclusion, not just as a program but as a core organizational value?" And again, we'll start with Rob.
Thank you, Steve. You know, obviously, I think for me, it's going to be very important for me not to be the leader but to actively support people making this change and to speak up for them and back them. Because one thing I've learned is that, one thing I've learned is that as you learn, as you get older, you also need to unlearn stuff as much as you learn stuff. And so as we grow older, we need to keep that in mind, I think, and some of the things we thought we know just ain't so. So a couple of my experiences, I think it really helped me in the last few years think about this as well. When I was elected the chair of the Washington County Chamber a few years ago, Deanna Palm, the president, came to me and said, "We need to do diversity councils. I'm going to do diversity councils, business diversity councils." And she felt, and I think she was correct, that a lot of our small business owners, a lot of them are people of color. Half the people in Hillsborough identify as people of color. Many of our small business owners, particularly the very small and micro-business owners, are startups on the shoestrings, and regardless of who they are or where they came from, they need support. And so getting people in a room that look like those folks where they could share similar experiences had a profound impact on their ability to succeed. And as I watched this and would go to some of their meetings, it had a profound effect on me. When I started, you know, years ago in leadership roles, I'd look around at a table, and a lot of people would look like me. And I found that we talked about the same things. And as you grow older and you start listening and you start to have much more diverse voices and you hear them, they're not just there, you actually hear and you listen to them. And what you find is that they have different viewpoints that are very important, they're different than yours, possibly, but they're profound and they're important to learn and listen to. And so, that being said as a background, my role in this would be, when a policy came forward, I would want to make sure that it was viewed as to what effect this would have on marginalized communities and people who don't speak up. And I've had experience with that in the justice system as well, is it's important to advocate for people. And I did that in the justice system, and I will continue to do that as city council and a policymaker. And I will lead if asked, but I don't think it's my job to talk about how to lead this. I think I will help facilitate a discussion, I will support the discussion, I will support policies that make sure we have DEI inclusivity. I think these are all extremely important, because I've learned that you get a much better product and a much better outcome when you include everybody. And so it's not just, it makes me feel good, it's actually, or the right thing to do, but it's actually the best thing to do. And I would support those policies.
Thank you. Mark Rambo.
Thank you. So similar to what Rob said, I actually like to use the term empowerment as opposed to inclusion. Inclusion to me sounds like somebody's deciding who should be included and in what way. Empowerment is more about putting people in a position where they can make those decisions. And additionally, I would add accessibility to DEI as well, which is often overlooked. Physical and mental disabilities is also something that we should be thinking about. And one of the things that I support is the idea of affinity town halls. Town halls in general is something that we should be having, but affinity town halls to bring together individuals who have shared interests and backgrounds or experiences to discuss pressing community issues, build connections, and promote a culture of empowerment. Another very specific proposal that I have is force the city of Hillsborough to proclaim itself a transgender sanctuary city and implement comprehensive nondiscrimination policies to protect transgender individuals in employment, housing, healthcare, and public accommodations. The city would also enhance supportive services by providing relocation assistance for those facing discrimination and strengthen enforcement of hate crime laws while creating safe spaces for transgender individuals. I would just finish up by saying that I think it's very easy for us to say this, to have DEI in mind. I think one of the distinctions is that, having lived in different communities, lived in everything from impoverished to more wealthy communities, I've lived among communities of color, I've lived in communities where the non-white communities were the communities who were empowered. So I think it's a difference of lived experiences that has shaped my values and shaped my priorities. And so that's how I would approach DEI on city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Mead.
Perfect. Diversity, equity, inclusion should not be a gold star on the wall. It must be embedded in every policy, every decision, and every aspect of how our city operates. It starts with representation, not tokenization. One of my primary goals will be to make sure that every board, commission, advisory group, and city employee group reflects the diversity of our community. This means ensuring that the voices of people of our community from different racial, cultural, and socioeconomic backgrounds are not just heard but actively shaping the decisions we make. I want to create mechanisms that ensure underrepresented communities have a seat at the table, that can be through intentional recruitment of leadership roles and city involvement, but also through regularly scheduled town halls in different neighborhoods with language-accessible forums and online platforms where people can engage without the barriers. DEI is also about equitable resource allocation. It's not just about people sitting at tables but how we distribute resources. I would ensure we look at the budget through an equity lens. That means assessing how city programs impact various communities, whether we're talking about housing, transportation, or small business support, and making sure that we're addressing historical inequities. It is a fact that Hillsborough is growing, and as we grow, we need to make sure that the neighborhoods that have historically been overlooked or underfunded are getting the investment they deserve. Infrastructure projects, affordable housing developments, and public services should be assessed for how they impact our marginalized communities. I'd also like to focus on community engagement. If we're going to advance DEI in a meaningful way, we need to meet people where they are and really listen. That means actively going into different communities, whether it's cultural organizations, neighborhood groups, or faith-based communities, and asking what they need from their city government. Too often, policies are created in a vacuum without taking into account the real-world experiences of those they impact. I want to change that by creating ongoing structured feedback loops where community members can continually inform how we're doing and where we can improve.
Okay, thank you very much. Mike Maturin.
Great. Thanks. I come from a place of compassion and empathy towards others and their situation. I believe these values should inform any and everything we do as a city. We should take the time to examine our policies to ensure that every voice, not just those that speak the loudest, are being considered. My vision for How to Make Hillsborough Great begins from the ground up. It challenges the idea that there is any value in the trickle-down effect we always hear about, an idea that is outdated and was created to justify policies to enrich those who already had power and money and a voice. I want to focus on building connections between communities, working on foundational policies to help guide how we grow and develop and to facilitate these connections, concentrating on those things that bring us together rather than dwelling on what drives us apart. I think that this is a path to providing equal opportunity to what is in some ways right now a sprawling city that is only continuing to grow outward. I think the more open we can be and the more diverse opinions we gather, the stronger our community will be. Creating venues where people feel comfortable sharing their views, knowing that they will be heard and considered is an important step. Meeting people where they are rather than having them come to us. I'm also a strong believer in intergenerational equity. I would like to develop programs which help the next generation's leaders gain the skills and confidence they will need to continue the good work that we start. The strength of our community is our diversity, the thing that will allow us to come up with creative solutions to the pressing problems of our time. To ignore this in the defense of the status quo and to not put these values at the forefront of our community's decision-making would not only be a disservice to those excluded but to our community as a whole. I can see that most of the people that I'm, or everybody that I'm running with agrees the same way, so I'm glad that they believe this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Elizabeth Case.
Thank you. Hillsborough is the economic engine of Oregon, and because of this, we bring in incredible people from all over the world to live, work, and play here. The diversity of our community is just another thing that I love about living here in Hillsborough. I think the city's actually done some really great work when it comes to DEI, especially by adding in their commitment to belonging this year. In every room, we need to be asking, though, who's not here and why? And how do we lower the barriers to get them in the room and to the table? One thing I think we've done really well, one thing that I've appreciated this past year is learning, as I serve on the Environmental Stewardship Committee, that starting this fall, boards and commissions will now, members of boards and commissions and any other ad hoc committees will get a stipend and access to childcare services so that they have a better access to that and so they can step up and serve. I'm really excited about that. I've also been really impressed with how the city is already including DEI work when looking at infrastructure in our city and using an equity lens with that, from starting highlight in our neighborhoods that have the least amount of access to retrofitting sewer pipes according to neighborhoods, not just by need but also with a commitment to environmental justice. I will continue to support the ways the city is already working towards making DEI a core organizational value, and will look for opportunities where we can expand that.
Thank you very much. And Sava Anwar.
Thank you. So DEI is personally important to me. Having grown up in proudly patriarchal societies, doors were routinely shut on me. I have experienced being left out and being overlooked. And then when this happens to people who are excluded, oh, sorry, when this happens to people who are excluded, they suffer, of course, but actually, the whole society suffers. And the whole society suffers because so many of its members cannot lead productive lives. I will work hard so that this does not happen in Hillsborough. When I started working, I was the only woman in that organization, and I realized how much easier my life was because other women who had come before me had changed things. There was a ladies bathroom on the floor, there was only one, but there was one. There was maternity leave, it was unpaid, but it was there. Bumping rooms came much later. Recently, as I was canvassing, I met this incredible woman who told me how she had been on the city council in another city many years ago and how she had been the first woman to be on city council. I thanked her for making things easier for others to follow. Hillsborough is a diverse city. It is getting more diverse. Everyone in this city should be able to reach their full potential regardless of where they come from, where they live, what they look like. DI ensures that Hillsborough is vibrant, innovative, and competitive. As a As a policymaker, my plans are to use data-driven decision-making, use data to identify disparities and tracking progress to ensure that efforts are targeted and effective, a citywide DI plan, developing a plan with community input, and proposing a DI commission to provide a framework for meaningful change, and accessible public spaces and public forums so that everybody can participate. Thank you.
Thank you very much to all the candidates. We've gone through the three questions that the city has given you in advance. We have a number of questions that came from the audience. I don't know that we're going to get all of those in, but I'm going to try to maybe do some combining of some of these questions, and we'll give you maybe 90 seconds to answer this first question. The question was submitted by John Hyde, Hillsborough resident, or Hade, and also a related question from Janice Brown. In light of the fact that approximately 30% of residents in Hillsborough do not drive, either due to physical or financial limitations or by choice, do you support placing a higher priority on providing transportation options for these people? And Janice Brown adds to this, referencing the recent TriMet survey indicating that 82% of the riders felt unsafe. With the red and blue line max, what would you do as a city councillor to make public transportation safer? So, and we'll start with Sabah Enver.
Sure you don't want to start with Rob? No kidding.
Yes, pass. Yeah, so the first one, yes, absolutely, public transportation, that should be the highest priority. In fact, when we are looking at, when you look at the city plans, the city transportation plans, you see that. So that is already something that the city is looking at, is planning, and I fully support that. As far as not feeling safe on the TriMet, yes, I use it too quite a bit, and I don't let my kids go on it by themselves. They do bike around, they drive, but I don't let them go on the TriMet. I feel that our city needs to increase our services according to how much we have grown, and so that includes police as well. And that's one of the things that I am, that is something that I support. Thanks.
Okay. Making sure I get all the notes here. So yes, agreed on the first question of supporting higher priority to residents who don't drive, absolutely. You know, I was at that transportation listening session the other night, and it's important that we make sure that we have safe sidewalks, that we have access to transportation for folks, that they aren't waiting three hours round trip for a dial-a-ride to come and get them and take them to their doctor appointment. There's a lot of services we need to prioritize that way, absolutely, and anything we can do to make it easier. You know, I think one of the fun bonuses of moving to Orenco Station when we moved here was that we could walk to the MAX line to get downtown, which leads to that next question. Yeah, I don't feel as safe on the MAX as I did before the pandemic. I think a lot of people don't. But the last few times I've taken it, I actually have felt pretty okay, and I know that TriMet is doing, understands that. They've increased the cameras, I've noticed more employees around as well, but I think there's more we can do, and it's safety at the stations, it's safety on the MAX. And this goes to making sure that we have the wraparound services for mental health and that we're actually, you know, making sure that people have access to that. So we'll go with that.
Thank you. Mike Maturin.
Great. Yeah, I'm a big proponent of not driving cars. Probably guessed that. Yeah, I used to ride my bike around quite a bit. I do around here, too. So yeah, I'm all for public transportation, I'm all for increasing bike lanes safely, too, so maybe, you know, programs that make people more aware that bikers have just as much right to the road as cars. We're seeing a lot of electric bikes around, too, so I think those are good things that we can use to kind of reduce our admissions and get people around. And cars are expensive, so yeah, if you can make it easier for people to move around the city without cars, I think that's just a great, great thing. As far as the public safety on the TriMet goes, I kind of agree with everyone else. I think addressing some of the causes of why people turn to crime is more productive than just enforcement. I think, you know, people should feel safe riding public transport, and that's important. So yeah, I think just figuring out ways beyond just arresting people, I think could be, could go a long way towards solving some of those issues. And like Elizabeth was saying, I think lately, as I've been riding the TriMet, it seems that things are moving in a more positive direction, so thank you.
Thanks. Jake Mead.
We have an amazing city with some great parks, great event spaces, fantastic restaurants, and we should make sure that accessibility to those, no matter what mode of transportation is available to everyone. And so I would make transportation and the different modes of mobility a priority. We need a city councillor who can build the partnerships with the other government agencies. TriMet's run through Metro, and not something that the city can control, but we can help with establishing the right relationship and partnership and expressing these concerns. As this Hillsborough resident, you should feel safe on our streets and on public transportation, and that if elected, that will be a priority of mine.
Yes, Mark. Rambo.
Yeah, I'm going to just take it, big picture for a second, just in reflecting on it. This idea of individual transportation by combustible engines was basically something that was foisted upon us. Public transportation, in many cases, makes a lot more sense, and the development that we've experienced, not just in Hillsborough, but in general, has been based on the assumption that everybody's going to have a car. So I've probably spent more years as someone who didn't have a car and used public transportation, so I see it as something very valuable and important. It's important for the working class, and but I think we also have to take into consideration that when it comes to jobs for working-class people, it's not always an option, which is why I think we always need to be listening to the people who are impacted. When we talk about public transportation, when we talk about individual transportation and what that looks like, I think we need to be considering some angles that we may not have considered. But in general, what I would say is that I'm a big proponent for public transportation, and as John would like to hear, a big proponent of bike lanes and as much biking as possible, because it's good for the health, good for the environment. Thanks.
Great, thanks. And Rob Harris.
Thank you. Yes, public transportation is important, bike lanes are important. I guess I'd be interested to know, like, of the people who don't drive, how do they get around? Is it through TriMet? Is it through buses? Is it through light rail? Is it through bikes? If we surveyed this information, we would have a better idea of how to address those, so that'd be a data-driven solution. The city is working or has adopted a traffic safety plan. I've been going to all the city council meetings and the work sessions over the last nine months in preparation of possibly being on council, getting up to speed on these issues. One of the things I've seen a couple presentations on is this traffic safety plan, and one of the things they've been working on is traffic calming devices at the intersections that have the highest levels of accidents, particularly making pedestrians feel safe, so making these high danger crosswalks safer for the people so they do feel that they can walk and they do feel they can bike. And that's another data-driven policy that I think we need to continue to pursue. As far as the safety on the light rail specifically, that is an issue, and it's a cross-sectional, again, it's another issue that comes in the homelessness, but affordability, housing, the criminal justice system, and people coming through. If someone is on a train and acts out in a criminal-type behavior and a police officer is called, that police officer is not going to arrest that person. They will give them a citation and tell them to get off the train because that's the status of our resources in the justice system. Hillsborough is the county seat, it has the jail, it has many facilities and services for folks, and so we may see more of that maybe than some other communities. It doesn't matter because you still have to work with your public safety officers, TriMet security, in order to address these issues. You do have a right to feel safe. You should feel safe. We should all feel safe on these trains. I take the train as well downtown quite a bit. It is something that if you have the skills, knowledge, and the experience to understand the levers, again, the tools available to us to make these safer, you can talk to the right people and get people in a room and at least try and make some progress on these issues.
Great. Thank you very much. I'm looking at Linda here, do we have time for one more question before we get to the closing statements? Yeah, okay, that's great. So this is a question from Sarah Gentha, I think is how the name is pronounced, and the question really is, how comfortable are you with the fluoridation of city water? And what would you advise for poor families with pregnant mothers or small children who have concerns about that? And we'll start on this end.
My end? Yes. All right. Yes, so I have to say I do not know too much about this. I was at this, I've been attending city council meetings, there was a session on this. I know that this is going to be on the ballot, and it's an advisory vote, which means that the city is going to vote. And if it votes to get the water fluoridated, then it's going to go not to the council, but to the Water Commission, UDLIS Commission. Yes, thank you. So that's where we are. Personally, I, if it was just asked, I would follow the current CDC guidelines, that's what I would do, but that's all I know about it.
Elizabeth Case. Can you re-ask the first part of the question? Sorry.
How comfortable are you with the fluoridation of the city's water? And what would you advise for poor families with pregnant mothers or small children with regard to concerns about it?
Thank you. I am comfortable with the fluoridation of water here in Hillsborough, based on what the CDC has said and based on what, you know, Oregon Health Authority recommends. I do trust that data at this point, I trust what my dentist is telling me. I'm excited to see what the vote, how the vote turns out, and we'll follow those, and we'll follow the will of the voters in moving that forward or not, if that doesn't happen. As for concerns about how families with young children, pregnant women, you know, this would go back to the kind of the same answer of talking to your pediatrician, talking to your dentist, talking to your doctor, talking to your OB-GYN, to talk with them about how they feel about it and take their recommendations with that as well. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Mike Maturin.
I oppose the fluoridation of the water in Hillsborough. I don't really see the point. I know that fluoridation is important for teeth. There's been no real benefit, or there's no evidence that shows that you consuming it internally has any effect on your teeth. I have been following this issue a little bit. It is an advisory vote, and the city does say they have the money for it, but they would be taking that money that they could already, that they were going to have earmarked for other upgrades to the water system. I would also think that using that money for more direct interventions, dental clinics, helping people understand the benefits of fluoride applied directly to your teeth and not in your body, could go a much longer way towards increasing dental health without adding some expensive chemical to our water that's going to be something we have to pay for for the rest of our, as long as we have it in the water, we're going to have to keep paying and paying and paying for it. And there's no real, they had no benefit to consuming it, so thank you.
All right. Jake Mead.
I believe in the science of fluoride, that fluoride does help create healthy teeth. I, as a city councillor, if elected, will honor the vote of the people. My biggest concern with regards to the fluoridation of water is what it would do to the end consumer on the monthly bill. Currently, the city is shutting off 43 homes a month from water, and those are the people who would be the most benefited from fluoridated water, because I doubt that those families are getting dental care. And whether we fluorid our water or not, it won't matter if they don't have water. So for me, it's a cost structure for our lowest-income families on how are we going to pay for it? The city has taken rate after rate after rate on water, and this is just be another rate increase that is absorbed by everyone, and I think this voting yes on fluoridated water would cause the most harm to our most marginalized communities.
Thank you. Mark Rambo, your response?
I think I feel very aligned with what Jake had to say. In principle, I support fluoridation, I think it's an equity issue, and but the way I would like to put it, I think I'll probably vote yes on fluoridation. I think that it's the right thing, but there are going to be issues where there is, that are controversial, that there are opinions on both sides. So as soon as we say, well, that person, I don't like them because they came to that conclusion, I think that we're going in the wrong direction. You know, I'm always willing to listen and to hear what people present. My understanding as of today, fluoride is good to be in the water. Hillsborough is one of the few places that doesn't have fluoride in the water, so I support it as an equity issue. If it's something that can't be done, well, then maybe we could talk about universal dental care so that nobody has to pay for dental coverage. If the issue is that, you know, we need the fluoride, and I think the evidence is clear that we do, but the problem is that it's not equitable. Not everybody has access to dental care, not everybody even has the time or opportunity to be taking their children to the dentist. So I'll leave it at that. I support fluoride, I think it's proven science, but I'm open to other, I'm open to other options. I know that people have different versions of what's correct scientifically. I'm telling you, based on the research that I've done, I believe that fluoridating the water is the right thing to do.
Thank you. And Rob Harris, your response?
Thank you. Well, I'm not a doctor, I'm not a researcher, I'm not a medical scientist, I don't work in a lab, I can Google things, so that leads me to the conclusion that I should, the generally accepted expertise in the CDIC is that fluoride is good overall, and therefore I will vote for it. And for those exact same reason, I wouldn't pretend to give any advice to any person, mother, family, as to what they should do about it. If someone else mentioned this, I would say the same thing. You should go to the medical professionals that you trust and seek their opinion if you have questions. As to the outcome of the vote, I'll honor the will of the people. I think it's a contentious issue, I understand both perspectives, and it seems to me that this is sort of a really good use of a public referendum. And as long as we can also make sure that this will not increase rates, that's another issue, the presentation I saw at a city council meeting a couple of months ago was that it will not increase rates and may delay a couple of updates of the system, so I'd want some insurance of that. So if we can, you know, if there's a clear majority one way or the other, and if the majority is yes, we should do it, and we can make sure that rates are stabilized and are not affected by this, you know, then I would go with the will of the people.
Great, thank you. And thank you to those of you who submitted questions, I really appreciate that you took the time to do that. Some of the questions, we have not been able to get to, but there will be some time when we're done. I think if you want to come up and talk to some of the candidates when we're done here tonight. At this time, I'd like to move to inviting each of the candidates, starting with Sabah Enveri, invite each of the candidates to make a two-minute closing statement.
So in closing, I want to thank you for your attention and consideration. As a 24-year Hillsborough resident, mom, and engineering manager, I am committed to serving our community with transparency, integrity, and inclusive engagement. I do want to share my vision for Hillsborough. My vision is a city that exemplifies sustainable my vision for Hillsborough. My vision is a city that exemplifies sustainable industry and high livability. With existing technology and thoughtful planning, we can create a vibrant community where our children thrive, our environment flourishes and our economy prospers. We can achieve this through thoughtful economic growth and climate resilience. I would like to work together, engaging residents and businesses to make Hillsborough a beacon of sustainability and livability for generations to come. Thank you for your trust. My name is Saba, and I ask for your vote to represent Ward 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Case.
Thank you all for coming out tonight. I really appreciate the conversation that we've been able to have and will continue afterwards. It'll be, that'll be great. There's a lot we don't get to talk about tonight. A few things I want to make sure, to make, make sure you are aware of. I've run my own business for 13 years. I've been a small business owner. And I wanted to share my endorsements. I have a strong list of endorsements. I have the majority of the city council, the majority of the school board, the majority of the county commissioners, our metro councillor, Juan Carlos Gonzalez, our state senator, Senator Janine Solomon, amongst other endorsements here in Hillsborough. Like Rob mentioned, I've been attending all the city council meetings and work sessions since the beginning of the year. A few of us have been doing that, which has been great. I have mentioned, I mentioned earlier, some of my top priorities, housing, workforce development, environmental stewardship. Excited about that climate action plan next year. I'm excited for the future of Hillsborough. And I want to make sure we have thoughtful planning as we grow to balance the small-town charm we all love while looking towards our future. So I think my service, my experience, my commitment to Hillsborough are why I'm asking for you to vote for me as your next Hillsborough city councillor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike McTernan.
Great. I just want to say first, thanks for everybody coming. And it was really great to get to know all the candidates. But he's a, y'all have really good choices. So I have two young children. I wonder what sort of world they'll be forced to live in if we don't start making changes to how we interact with our environment, how we temper our growth and how we treat one another. I see a world in a city that is focusing on economic growth at the expense of our health and wellbeing. The city's turning the land around our homes into industrial zones, ushering in industries that will pollute our air, be responsible for a large increase in greenhouse gas emissions. They tell us these things are necessary for the city to grow and thrive, but is that the only truth? Are there no other ways? Are we just taking the path of least resistance, the well-trodden path that ignores the future costs for present gains? Is this what we want to leave for the next generation? Warehouses and data centers and factories that were once farms and forests? Is the money these industries bring worth the gamble of our future? The poisoning of our air and water, the limiting of our options on how to manage thousands of acres of land to make something better and not just the same? Can't we be more creative than that? Can't we, as a community, aspire to a greater vision of what a city or what a community can be? Not just a place for workers to live, but a place where people can thrive? I want to make a life here, raise my kids here, be proud of my city and what it stands for, and I worry that we're not on the right path. We need people in position of power and influence willing to challenge the idea that the only way forward is through economic growth, that the only way to make our lives and our city better are by making more money, and that look past the present to a more just and equitable future. I hope to be one of those people. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Mead.
Thank you. I'll echo what everyone else has said. Thank you so much for being here tonight for live streaming. And if you catch, catch this later, 1.25, you'll be done a lot faster. I've entered this race as the community candidate with no endorsements and frustrated by the status quo. I'm frustrated with city management stating that we've done, we're done building standalone data centers, while just this week, city council approved a seven-acre site to build a standalone data center. I'm frustrated with the city council that focuses on the special interests of large corporations and not the community that they've been elected to represent. I'm frustrated with the lack of conversations and town halls hosted by the city. We need a councillor that believes in transparency, which is why I've hosted over 14 roundtable discussions. And once elected, I will continue to host community conversations. Because in order to represent all of Hillsborough, I have to know what's happening in your Hillsborough. We need a councillor that is focused on our community, which is why I am the only candidate endorsed unanimously by the city council that has chosen to remain in their role in 2025, that want to continue to govern and want to represent the community. We need a community candidate on council, which is why my ask tonight is that you join your neighbors, join the Hillsborough firefighters, the Hillsborough Education Association, the Hillsborough Classified United, the grocery workers at our local Safeways, Albertsons and Fred Meyers, as well as the American Federation of Teachers and the Oregon League of Conservation Voters. Join all our neighbors and say, we need Mead on city council, and vote Jake Mead, the community candidate in Ward 2 by November 5.
Thank you. Mark Granbo.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you all for participating tonight. And those of you at home, definitely want to thank everybody on the panel here. It's been great to hear what everybody has to say and share a panel with all of you. Let me see. The representation I think we need on council is representation of and for the working class. I'm proud and honored to have been, to have the support and endorsement of our local Democratic Party, Democratic Party of Washington County, the Working Families Party, working-class unions like the UFCW, the Grocery Workers Union, and progressive elected officials, as well as our outgoing president of the city council, Anthony Martin. My goals on city council include uplifting voices that are often un or underrepresented and dismantle barriers that restrict participation in shaping Hillsborough's future. I hope you'll agree that this is the representation that's missing from our government. A vote for Mark Granbo is a vote to empower those who have been, historically been left out of the decision-making process. Now, it is the case that we have fine people on the stage here and fine people in the government already. I suppose I would say that my argument is, I want to be there representing the working class. So all the wonderful ideas that maybe, that may come up from whoever ends up on council, I want to be the, I want to be on council as a working-class person, representing the working class and see, saying, how does this affect these different communities? So it's not just a matter of, well, this policy works and the data and the status quo and all that kind of stuff. It's about somebody who's sitting there, one of you, who's sitting there on the council. Thank you.
Thank you. And Rob Harris, you're again, the cleanup advocate.
Yeah, I'll bet, I'll bet Saba's kicking herself for living in District 1. First of all, I do want to thank the candidates who appeared today. I actually learned a lot and I appreciate a lot of what they say. And I agree with a lot of what was said as well. And I think Hillsborough is lucky to have folks who like this, who are willing to stand for, for office. I'm talking about them, not me. But I mean, I think they were just did a fantastic job. I grew up, one of five children in a middle-class family in Camas. I went to community college, transferred to University of Washington, earned a degree in urban planning, went to law school where I graduated with honors, and that was right here in Portland. I worked part-time during law school at a firm in Vancouver to help pay for my school. They offered me a position when I graduated, but I'd just gotten married. My wife's job was in Hillsborough. It was better than mine. And so I took a job at the DA's office here in Washington County. And that's how 37 years ago, I ended up in Hillsborough. And my wife is still sitting here today. After a few years, I left the DA's office. I opened my own firm. I represented clients going through divorce, charged with crimes, businesses, people selling real estate and being foreclosed upon. My one-person practice eventually grew into a firm of 11 lawyers, over 20 employees. And I learned a lot about treating people with empathy for the struggles they were going through, how to keep and treat good employees and balancing the books so my employees and their families had some security. I believe being a lawyer is a privilege and includes a responsibility to give back. So I created the Washington County's nonprofit Public Defense Consortium. I was co-creator of the Veterans Treatment Court. This year, Oregon's Chief Justice appointed me to the State Commission for Public Defense, where I continue to advocate for fair and equitable justice system for all. In my personal life, I have served as a board member of the library on various city groups and task forces. And my wife and I have very actively volunteered at our children's elementary, middle and high schools. We're proud of that volunteer work and the role models we set for our three daughters. Why is this information important? It's not because I automatically expect you to support me for this, or that I've earned your vote based on some biography that I've given. But it's a candidate's life story is a testament to values, their commitment to this community, their character and their capabilities. It's not just a resume, it's a job reference to you, for the voters, as to what type of leader a candidate can be for this city. So as city councillor, I will bring my experience, education, professional skills, knowledge of our community, and my life experience to lead in a thoughtful and inclusive way. And I ask for your support and your vote.
Thank you very much. And please join me in thanking the candidates for their responses. I would like, in some concluding remarks here, I'd like to thank the candidates, first of all, for running, for, for being there. And also for making my job easier tonight. Appreciate it very much. I'd like to acknowledge and thank TVC TV for filming this event. As you can all see, it will be available on Channel 30 and also will be made available on the Hillsborough Public Library YouTube channel early next week. I'd like to remind everyone that Tuesday, November 5 is Election Day. The last day to register to vote for this election is October 15. Oregon offers online voter registration, for those of you who are not yet registered. You can register by mail to vote in Oregon by printing a voter registration form, filling it out and mailing it to your local election office. You can also register to vote in person, if you prefer. As a reminder, the Hillsborough Public Library also has voter registration forms available for you to complete and mail in. In conclusion of this 2024 City of Hillsborough Public Forum for the city council seats, I would like again to thank each of the candidates for joining us and providing some insights for people to make a better decision. But I also want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. I have to say, I am so impressed that we have a full house here tonight. We had to put up extra chairs. And thank you for your interest and your effort to be more informed voters. It bodes well, I would say, for the city of Hillsborough and its future. Make your vote count and have a wonderful evening. And as I said, the candidates, most of them, I think, will be around for a while if you have specific questions for any of them. Thank you very much and good night.